And looking forward to this. Thank you for coming out and thank you for everybody's efforts toward the budget. I know that it's not just the department managers that have to go through this. As we can see here, there's other people deeper than that involved with this. And so, thank you very much for those efforts that you worked very hard working for the taxpayers' money, so. Guess a formal thank you. With that, I think we get to get started with Martin Luther King Center.
Well, actually, before we turn the microphone over to Jerry, just had a short PowerPoint that I wanted to go through, just because I know that some of these points I would want to make, we are going to be too tired at the end of tonight for me to make, and we're just going to be running from here, so. Just wanted to say for just a few things. And can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, this is actually an interesting night. This is an interesting night because we don't often, we haven't televised this in the past, and so, we do have people watching from home tonight. But, just a quick overview of what we've done and where we're headed. And, of course, we did do some budget work last week, and then tonight, we're going through department presentations, and I just wanted to mention what the next steps are for tonight. So, last week, we did review a draft of the CIP, and we also reviewed a draft of the budget presentation. And, just a reminder, we were at $122.8 million in total expenditures and a proposed tax levy rate of 2.8343 for a $13.7 million levy. Just wanted to review this slide. This was a slide that was on the budget presentation last week, and this is a review of the components of the levy, for the levy that were, for the taxes that we're paying this year compared to the proposed levy for last year. And, again, this year, if you look at the very bottom of this, we were at 2.657 property tax rate and then proposing a 2.8343. You see the components of the levy here, and if I just kind of, you know, work my way from the bottom up, looking at a 2% increase to parks, and this equates to, oh, gosh, I didn't write it down, but I want to say it was $37,000 increase to the parks levy. Keep in mind, I think this is the third year now that we're giving a 2% increase to parks, and then, we actually didn't provide them an increase for some time before that. Same true for the library, so the library is looking at a 2% increase. I always have to remind you, because I can feel Angela behind me, that the library did ask for a 4.99% increase, and that's part of state statute where the library board does make a financial report to the council early in the year and asked for a certain levy increase. So, 2% of their levy is $42,000. The fire and police pension, a 6% and 4% increase in their portions of the levy for just shy of $400,000 increase, and these are actuarially determined, so this is given to us. And this is actually when we're working on the levy, kind of where we start. And if we had no increases in any other portions of the levy, we would be looking at a 3% increase. Finally, we have the general fund, and that's showing a $519,000 increase. We do talk a lot about the general fund, and this approximates the amount of revenue that we will now be transferring from the general fund to our new capital projects street fund, which we're excited about. We won't go into details on that, but, you know, this is kind of the picture of the levy. So, one of the questions I've gotten this week, both, you know, from constituents and residents of the city, is how does a 6.67% increase translate in their taxes? And there's no doubt that it can be kind of a confusing concept to wrap your brain around. Even I have to, like, review the math. And, you know, I did have a resident call me earlier last week, and she was screaming and yelling and very upset about the property tax increase. And so, as I was listening to her, I asked her for her address, and she actually had more than one address. So, she had three addresses, and as she was speaking to me on the phone, I pulled up her addresses, and one of her addresses, she actually is exempt from property taxes because she has a senior freeze. She's been there so long, she actually does not pay property taxes. So, I did remind her of that on the call. So, our increase does not impact her at all. Her other property had a $500 bill, and then, the second, third one had an $1,100 bill, and she actually has that one on the market. So, we talked about the impact of her $500 tax bill and the 6.67% increase, and it was very small, not to minimize the impact to her finances, but it was literally cents per month. Anyway, she felt great after we got done, and so, it was a good exercise, and so, you know, I'm always happy to talk to any resident and look at their specific, unique situation to talk about their tax bill. This is an example of a tax bill. It might be someone sitting at this table's tax bill. So, I just kind of wanted to show this as an example when looking at a tax bill. So, the pieces that go into this, first of all, fair market value. By the way, my house is worth more than this, but this is what the assessor says, so hopefully she's not listening. But, you basically take the fair market value and divide it by three. So, that is the assessed valuation. That's the first part of the calculation. And then, and so, that's where you get to this $22,000 number. And then, any exemptions are listed in this area here in the top right, and I received my homestead exemption for this tax bill because it was the second year that I had owned the house. So, it brings down the net valuation to $15,000, $16,000. And so, a tax rate is per hundred dollars of net valuation. So, the tax rate is per hundred dollars of net valuation. So, when calculating this particular tax bill, you take that net valuation of $16,493 and divide it by 100 to get to how many hundreds there are. Multiply that by this total tax rate, which is down here, the 10.6184. So, this total tax rate is the sum of all of the overlapping tax districts on this bill, and that's how you get to a tax bill of $1,751. There has been a change in the last couple of years in the City of Rock Island's portion of the tax bill and how it's presented, and this was a result of an effort by the library to show their levy as separate. And so, for the city's levy, you would take the 2.2128 plus the .4442 to arrive at the 2.657 number that we've been talking about. So, end of the story. All things being equal for this particular property, if there was no change in the valuation, no change in any other taxing districts rate or extended levy, a 6.67% increase for this property would be $2.43 per month in 2019. So, it's kind of fun to play with numbers. I've done this with some other properties in town. Anything I can do to help, please let me know. All right. Tonight, we'll be turning it over to Jerry to kick off with Martin Luther King, but we will be reviewing all of the departments, so we'll be pulling up the budget summaries that were attached to the agenda and going through them. This is a back and forth discussion, so if you have questions at any time during the presentations, even right now as I'm blithering on, just feel free to, you know, interrupt. After tonight, and this is really the big thing I wanted to make sure to cover because I know I'll forget, we're still working on finalizing the capital expenditures and balancing the funds. So, next week, we do plan to bring that CIP forward for approval. We don't have to do it next week, but I'd like to do that. Financial policies, review and approval. I don't see any need to make any major changes to the financial policies. They are included in your budget binder. I might just do some cleanup language and make sort of a little table that kind of summarizes the changes over time, because the first paragraph is getting a little lengthy. Anyway, so, between November 25th and December 2nd, we would need to publish a truth in taxation. And that would be a notice that would go in the paper. On December 9th, we would hold a public hearing for the property tax levy, a public hearing for the budget ordinance, and then, also, have a first reading of the tax levy ordinance and budget ordinance, and then, have the tax abatement resolutions on that agenda for your approval. I think we just do that in one swoop, but I don't think that's a two-night thing. Anyway, tax abatement, super important. It'll have, like, a lot of really, really big numbers on it, but the intention of that tax abatement resolution is to tell the county, all of the city's GO bonds, all of that debt, do not extend that or put that on our property tax bills. So, we have that right by nature of issuing GO debt, that we can extend it to the property tax bills. The city actually abates 100% of all of the principal and interest payments that are due during next year. So, that's the concept of that really long agenda item, and we'll be double, triple, quadruple checking that to make sure it's perfectly right. And then, on the 16th, would be the second reading and adoption of ordinance and resolutions. So, with that.
Stephanie?
Yes?
Are financial policies on the city's website yet?
I know we have talked about that, and I thought we added a tab for policies. I do believe that is on there.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, because you brought that up a couple of years ago. Anything else? Are you ready, Jerry?
Yep. Thank you. No, it's on. So, in looking at the Martin Luther King budget, looking at the budget summary for calendar year 2020, we are projecting overall a break-even budget, if you were to add up all the numbers across the funds. Of course, that's not entirely accurate in so much that each fund is its own entity in so much, and so, not each and every fund is balanced, but overall, the overall budget is balanced at this time. In looking at our staffing changes that are coming in the current year, we are looking at 6.39 full-time equivalents, which is a decrease from point, by .36 from last year. And what accounts for that is that we anticipate reducing our seasonal employees by one and one of our summer day camp weeks by one, going from seven weeks to six weeks to deal with the cost of the rise of minimum wage in our programs. Of course, during the year, since these are grant-funded programings, we'll be looking for additional funds to make up for that so that we can come to you all with a budget adjustment and restore services back to where they were. But I do think it's important to note that the seven-week camp has been in existence for two years, when it previously, years prior, had been six weeks. So, while it is a service reduction, it is a relatively new one, service that we've Special projects and service contracts. The King's Center, the majority of our funding comes from the state of Illinois through four contracts, and those contracts are through the Illinois Department of Human Services and the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and they help to fund our youth substance abuse programs, our pregnancy prevention programs, our after-school program, Teen Reach, and family advocacy program, which is our family counseling and youth program that exists in the community. And those add up to close to 700, well, closer to $660,000, $70,000 in total of our budget. That being said, we are looking to see a revenue decrease of 12%, and most of that comes from the reductions of volunteer-led programs. It does incur programmatic costs. However, these programs are ending due to lack of volunteer involvement in the programming. We're also seeing a decrease because, if you can imagine this, we did receive late payments in '19 that really should have been attributed to '18 but came so late that we could not, so inflated our revenue a bit for '19. And now, we're getting back to, if you want to call it normal levels, normal levels for some of our programming. So, that attributes for much of our decrease. It is important to note, however, that we are anticipating in some of our local funding, local foundations, that we expect a decrease in those from their notices to us, and we will be looking to reapply for our United Way grant in this coming year. As I mentioned, as far as service levels are concerned, as I mentioned, all other services, we look to remain the same. However, we are reducing our summer day camp by one week at this point in time with one seasonal employee. We do anticipate to still reach the same amount of people because we're still, we're seeing a resurgence in some of our special events, especially last year with our Family Fun Day. We saw an increase of attendance probably threefold this past year, and we anticipate to see that to continue in the coming year as we will leverage volunteers to help us plan that as well. The operational changes, this is not a change but a continuance in so much that we are engaging more aggressively in resource development. We did see some increases this year in unrestricted revenue, a direct result of our fund development efforts. However, it's very important to note that we really did start at ground zero, building a database and just a basic foundation. We're hoping to see in this coming year some realization monetarily in these efforts, but don't expect any significant improvements until year three or year four. In grants, I explained the local grants and the reduction of one seasonal employee, and then, we have made a $15,000 request for capital improvements for our building as we do on an annual basis to make sure we're providing a top-quality facility for rental in the coming year. That's the general overview for the budget for the King's Center. I'm more than happy to answer any questions from council at this time.
I have one question, Jerry.
Mm-hmm.
Part of your report refers to cessation of volunteer-led programs. Is it because there's a lack of volunteers or there's a lack of interest in the program?
Thank you for that distinction, a lack of interest in that program. One in particular is the active club engaged in significant fundraising to take major trips to Washington DC, to New York City, and they're not projecting to engage in that this year. That's a revenue difference of $30,000 in itself. And then, there are other programs such as our basketball program that will not be reconstituted this year as well.
Just some bookkeeping clarification. So, on page 108 in the binder, we have the expenses by fund. I guess I'm curious as to how these funds are funded, right? I mean, obviously, gaming is pretty clear. Sorry. Illinois DCFS, DHS, et cetera. I guess King's Center is one that I'm primarily curious of. What is the source of funding for that fund? What's the revenue source?
It's the 211. So.
Right.
Funding for what we refer to as 211, and it goes to much of our building and administrative costs, the majority of that funding and revenue for that will be $258,000, $260,000 a year. $169,000 will come from the general fund for that this year. $33,000 will come from renting the facility and leasing office space at the Martin Luther King Center. $34,000 to $35,000 will be transfers from our programmatic grants to deal with administrative costs, and then, we are anticipating some miscellaneous donations of $2,000 this year.
So, it's fair to say out of a $1,200,000 budget, that, what, $130,000 is what property tax? The general fund is property taxes, right?
$169,000.
$169,000 is coming from just property taxpayers?
Yes.
So, that's pretty, it's a pretty small portion of the budget overall.
And I think it's important to note also that that leverages the other programmatic grants, so the other million may not exist without the support from the $169,000.
Right.
Real quick clarification. The general fund is made up of more than just property tax.
Sure.
So, if you, depending if you split hairs or not, it may or may not be property tax. It is out of the general fund.
Even less than $160,000 could potentially be funded by property taxes.
Correct. That's correct.
Because I get some constituents who ask me, you know, what percentage of the King's Center's budget is funded by us, you know, property taxpayers? And so, it's nice to see how you and your department have worked to diversify revenue and not just have it funded by the Rock Island taxpayers. I know you work hardly in that, and it's one of your goals, so.
Thank you.
Good work.
How many, that going from seven weeks to six weeks for the camp? Each week is it different, are different kids each week, or is it the same kids all seven weeks?
The same kids all seven weeks. I'm sorry, you're going to ask?
All right.
We are never comfortable in cutting services, however, it's good to note that during the last few weeks of camp, mostly the last week of camp, we do see a drop in attendance mainly because parents are getting ready for school to get started, so they're taking vacations or whatever. So, we're more comfortable from that point of view.
Seeing if any other kids are going to be underserved, so to speak, but it won't be any new kids, it'll be the same ones, but just shorter period of time that somebody's working with them and developing product issues. How many kids usually?
We start with 150-plus kids a day. By the last week, we're probably at 90 to, 80 to 90 kids a day.
Does HUD fund any of your programs? Do you get any revenues from HUD?
Through CDBG, yes. We receive $144,000, and that is received in the Activity Fund 901.
Okay.
That leads into my question. So, that Activity Fund is just from programs that you have, or does that come from federal grants or what?
The CDBG funds come through the City of Rock Island, through the CED Department, and $144,000 whereabouts comes to the Martin Luther King Center for programs only. There was a time when CDBG would fund administration. In fact, in 1975, that's how the King's Center got started.
Right.
But, a change in the last, I couldn't tell you how many years, has resulted that it only funds programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Where's, I'm curious, there's $400,000 in the Activity Fund, 140, whatever you just said from CDBG is a part of that. Where else is the additional $300,000?
The vast majority are local grants such as United Way, the Moline Foundation, Roush Day Foundation, township, community grants, Hep and Stell. We also see some program fees or sponsorships for buying and adding the memorial service book and various other things as well.
Cool.
So, we see most of our fundraising in that fund.
Does the United Way Fund, is that their grant, end in '19 here, or is it in '20?
In '20, mid-year '20.
Because it was a three-year deal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, it ends in, after '20?
Right. June 30th, and we will be applying, of course, again, but the cycle will be for one year or two years. It hasn't been determined yet.
And that's in collaboration with the school system and?
This current grant that we hold is in collaboration with the school system. We're not intending on going with the school system this year, but we do plan to have a collaboration.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody?
Well, thank you. Thanksgiving is this Saturday and Sunday. If you are so inclined to join us, well, you are very well invited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Saturday and Sunday. I knew about Sunday.
I'm sorry.
Sunday, you have an event?
It's Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, is it?
Delivering food on Saturday.
Okay.
And inviting people to come eat with us on Sunday.
Okay. I'll be carving there on Sunday. I could use a dinner on Saturday. Can you deliver it to me on Saturday? My parking wreck is up.
I never do. Guilty as charged.
Trustee's event.
No, actually. No attendant.
This reminds me of the mailbox feast.
I'm 29.
Oh, gosh. I was lagging.
I heard the hiccup.
Hey. Go for it.
Good evening, everyone. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to present the 2020 budget summary for the Parks Department. With me here tonight is Todd Winter, the Assistant Director, and Kim Miller, Kim Cruzy, I'm sorry. She's our executive office manager and also our budget coordinator, so she does a lot of work for us. The department is staffed by 14 full-time staff, 43 part-time, and 119 seasonal staff members. Our functions are divided over four divisions. We have administration, golf, our hort sport maintenance, and recreation. Our FTEs are down 1.21 from our 2019 budget going into the 2020 budget, and the fitness and aquatic manager position has been reclassified. It's going to be more aquatic-focused to make it more manageable for the candidate that comes in, and the fitness duties have been absorbed between current staff, so there will actually be a little bit of a decrease there in expense for salary. Budgeted projects that we have for 2020, we are going to continue with our naturalized areas to address stormwater and erosion, dangerous maintenance areas, and educational opportunities, and to reduce in fuel consumption. We'll also continue with the Douglas Park project through 2020 with the completion of the northwest ball field and the multi-use field. This will address our ADA requirements, and hopefully, we'll be able to begin offering programs in the fall of 2020 if the weather cooperates. Whitewater Junction and RIFAC, we will be replacing all of the pool drains. This is a state-mandated thing according to the Virginia Graham Baker Act, and appreciate Aldrin Pulos offering up some assistance with that. We'll see what we can get done.
Dive down and change them?
Yeah, it could be a learning.
Yes. I want to see you do it without a tank.
Right.
I will.
In 2020, you will see some more cart path work done at the golf courses. We did some in '19 in some of the steeper hill areas where they continually were getting washed out, creating some dangerous situations, and we're going to continue to address those in 2020. At the end of the season here at the Eleanor Wallace Dog Park, we did have a fundraiser event that staff put on, and they were also able to obtain a few thousand dollars in donations. So, we will be making some dog park improvements in 2020 with fencing and dog amenities and things like that. It's a very heavily-used dog park. We'll be doing some ball field improvements at Lincoln and Hodge with additional turf and some fence repair necessary to make those safe. Hallberg improvements will continue. The electrical project at the Carriage House is currently underway, and that will be completed in 2020. This will allow for Hallberg to expand its programming and to generate additional revenue to become more self-sustaining and help offset some of the costs there. Whitewater Junction will be getting a new slide pump. We're replacing an original pump from 2003. We've got a lot of life out of that pump. The normal lifespan is about 10 years, so we've done well there. And the sports complex, we'll see some new fencing and asphalt repair. The 2020 requested CIP projects are as follows. We requested funds to begin a tree management program. The need, obviously, is for safety and also the next generation of trees. The canopies are very large. Safety's our number-one concern, and we also want to open up the canopies so we can have the next generation of trees and get some turf to grow underneath them to help with the stormwater and the erosion. We also asked for money for the Sunset Overlook Shelter. We need to improve the ADA access and safety and appearance to a highly-utilized park amenity at Sunset. The fit for that is it's highly-used, it's a staple within our community, several photos, engagements, river views, and attracts a large number of people on an annual basis. The feedback is it ranks very high in our community surveys that we've conducted. Next would be the Douglas Park multi-use field lights. Lighting will be required for fall activities for this field, especially for football and for soccer, and it provides a safe environment for special event opportunities as well. This project ties into the youth programming initiative that we have at Douglas. We want to be able to serve the underserved population there and also make contact with the refugee population and provide programming for them as well. Soccer's their number-one sport, and as we know, in the fall, it gets dark pretty early. And Douglas Park shows up very high in our survey results as well. Next would be shelter roof replacements at various locations. We have some shelter roofs that are old, and when it rains, they leak. Shelter rentals are a significant source of revenue for our department and are very popular amenities within the parks, and they also score very high in our survey results. Lastly, would be Hallberg improvements. with the refugee population and provide programming for them as well. And soccer's their number-one sport, and as we know, in the fall, it gets dark pretty early. And Douglas Park shows up very high in our survey results as well. Next would be shelter roof replacements at various locations. We have some shelter roofs that are old, and when it rains, they leak. Shelter rentals are a significant source of revenue for our department and are very popular amenities within the parks, and they also score very high in our survey results. Lastly would be Hallberg Improvements. The Hallberg State is operated through a partnership through the Friends of Hallberg, not the Friends of Douglas Park, which I put up there in error. With a property like this and buildings like this, there's a lot of annual maintenance necessary each year. If you don't do these things, it doesn't take long for things to deteriorate, and this partnership has worked really well, and we've got a lot of things done. So my hats are off to that Friends Group. Some budgeted, the budgeted contracts we have for the Parks and Recreation Department is, number one, we have the Millard Group with RIFAC, janitorial needs, and that's account eight-six-seven. We have Integrity Solutions, which takes care of the floor and window needs, and that is also eight-six-seven. We have Vander Vending at RIFAC for their vending machines, eight-six-seven, and we have WP Beverage, which is formerly AD Husing, for our beverage needs, also eight-six-seven. We contract with Northwest Mechanical for our HVAC needs at RIFAC. We contract with Pure Fitness Innovations for our cardio maintenance needs that we have. HMS and Kimball Complete Care are contracted for the mowing that's contracted in the parks. That's eight-two-two. And we also contract with Harris Golf Carts and GPS Tech at the golf courses, and that's Golf Clubhouses up there, which is eight-five-five and eight-three-five, not eight-three-four and eight-five-four. That's another error of my part. And lastly, we contract with Shutterbug Photography for our recreation pictures for our sports leagues, and that's eight-one-three. And we do put all of these contracts out to bid, typically on a three-year rotation. Program and reporting changes for twenty twenty. We have some expansions, we have some changes. For our fundraising and sponsorship campaign, this is a program that we're gonna continue to expand into twenty twenty and beyond. This capitalizes on the marketing value that the department generates through its program guide, social media, special events, and facility visits. We put ourselves in front of thousands, tens of thousands of people every year on an annual basis, and there's value to that. And we're seeing local businesses invest in that and seeing a great return on our partnership with them. So this is something that we wanna continue and actually expand on. It's helped us generate some necessary extra revenue, and it's a great program. Another program expansion is gonna be our movies in the parks. This is gonna expand to include RIFAC, Lincoln Park, Longview Park, and Martin Luther King Park, and others. This is something we did in twenty nineteen with great success, other than having one rain out. We moved the movie to RIFAC, and it also had great participation. Our Adventure Camp, this is a program that's been restructured to attract a variety of age groups. We've actually tapped into the junior-high market, which has been tough for us recreationally, to get that age group to wanna participate in structured programming. But our staff has done a good job to mix things up and come up with creative things and places for them to go and see, and it's paid off. We'll continue to grow this in twenty twenty. This year, we expanded our preschool program to an all-day program. This has been extremely successful, and we know that this school year obviously carries into twenty twenty school year, and this is something that we will continue to expand with twenty twenty and beyond. We also have expanded sports programming. Our youth sports offerings have been and will continue to expand across the board, all sports. And with Douglas Park coming online next year, our youth recreational baseball growth will be seen across the board. And this is something that our customers, there's a demand from our customers. Not everyone, and I think there's room for everyone to survive here in baseball. Not everyone wants to start in April and end in July and have a lot of games and practice and a little higher expense to register. They like our Park and Recreation program feel with the four-week program where they only have to buy a T-shirt that keeps it cheap and it's kinda fast, and they look for that experience. And we have the facilities coming online now to do so, so we're gonna expand in those areas. We have our informational graphs up now. Rock Island Park and Recreation generates thousands of facility, program, and special event visits in the city every year. And you can see by the graphs, on average, forty-four percent of those visits are from people that live outside of the City of Rock Island. And this amount of traffic is critical in generating revenue for the city and offsetting two-thirds of the Park and Recreation annual budget, which is something that we're very proud of. And if you look nationwide, it's opposite of the national trend. So it's something to be proud of. In closing, I would like to say the Parks and Recreation Board and staff take great pride in the facilities and services that we provide, and it's truly an honor to serve our community partners. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, John. First, a comment. The Parks Department is a great success story in Rock Island. I wanna congratulate everybody on that.
By great people.
Everyone, yeah. My question is about the partnerships you mentioned with the Friends of Hallberg and the Friends of Douglas Park. How much money, and this may be in the budget folder, the binder, I'm not sure, how much money do they generate on their own for their facilities?
That's a, that's a tough question to answer. It depends what grants are available. It depends what fundraising events they put on. I can tell you, last year in two thousand and nineteen, the Friends of Douglas Park, through private donations, through fundraising events, through some baseball games that they put on, it's well over thirty thousand dollars. Which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're getting ten, twenty-dollar donations, five hundred dollars here and there, it's quite a bit. The Friends of Hallberg are always, they're very creative. They're always coming up with new programming that generates revenue to offset what they're doing. They've kind of adopted our model. Everyone wants facilities like that to operate for free, and the reality is, you can't sustain that model. So when you have a program, Todd did a great job coming up with these program budget sheets that identify the expense associated with a program. You have to cover that first, and that's what our philosophy is, and Friends of Hallberg have a similar philosophy. If you don't cover the initial costs of the program, we don't do it because it's not sustainable unless we find alternate funding sources, a grant, a donor wants to do it, et cetera. So it depends what programs they run throughout the year. I know that they're very successful. That doesn't mean that they're okay all the time financially. The Friends of Hallberg, on an annual basis, need contributions to keep coming in, to keep this partnership alive. So I could go back and run reports for twenty nineteen and get you specifics, but it's in the, it's, in some cases, tens of thousands of dollars. If a grant comes in that we partner on, it could be a hundred thousand dollars dedicated to a specific project. And the electrical project at at the Carriage House is kind of an example. We worked with CED to properly obtain some HUD funds, and then the department kicked in some money too to make that happen. It was a necessary project because the electrical wasn't gonna pass any type of inspection, and you can only grandfather so much before you have another problem on your hands, so.
Well, and that's what's great about the partnership, because they contribute as well as the Parks Department. And as I understand it, they've also been responsible for lining up a lot of volunteer work.
One hundred percent.
And there's no price tag on that, so.
Absolutely, and they, and other departments have been great. CED, Public Works, the Parks Department, it's not just us. It's a city partnership with these groups.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask similar questions as I did for MLK Center, but we have three funds. Expenditure by Fund, Gaming, Debt Service, and Parks and Rec. Within Parks and Rec, so we're very proud here in Rock Island about how the fact that the majority of what funds our Parks and Rec Department is user fees, right? We have the reverse, where we don't have the majority of the funding come from property taxes. Out of this six-point-three-million-dollar budget, or fund budget, do you have a number on how much is generated by property taxes and how much is generated by user fees?
About a third. Yeah, about a third is property taxes, and two-thirds is the revenue that we generate.
And that's what John was referring to earlier, when that is unusual, because you don't see that in parks, municipal parks departments across the Midwest or even the US.
I hate to keep clarifying, but may or may not be property taxes. Sorry about that.
I'm simplifying, yes.
I know you are, and just for the public, it's televised and everything else, you know, once again, it all goes into one pot. So don't get me wrong, as we all know, but but there's sales tax and the income taxes.
I would say in this case, a little different, because we do levy for the parks separately.
Yes, okay. That's right, that's true.
So it is a little different than MLK. So we actually do transfer their pro-rata portion of any tax distribution we get from the county and deposit it to the parks.
I'll start saying locally-collected taxes. You know, good enough?
On average, about two-thirds is what we.
For user fees?
Yeah.
So approximately two-and-a-half million dollars' worth of locally-collected taxes fund it.
I think we're at about one point eight.
Hey, so that's even better.
Yeah.
I guess better, or that's even less than a third, if you're talking about six-point-three-million dollars.
And our budget is very weather-dependent, I'll say, and our staff does an excellent job of keeping their finger on the budget pulse. Twenty nineteen was a good example that our expenses appeared to be way down, and they were. The weather had a lot to do with that. We would close, send people home. But the revenue doesn't come along with it either when you're closed and you send people home, so it's, you have to watch that carefully. We have measures in place, and we have excellent management in place that do a very good job at doing that.
Any questions?
Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the hard work.
All right, turn it over to you. Where it should be, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and members of my staff. Kelly Kearns is with me. She's our Business and Facilities Director at the library and has a lot to do with putting, helping me put the budget together. And we also have, you know, our Board President is also in attendance, so, and Jenny, of course, is in our board. Before I begin, I wanna give a short history of public libraries in Illinois, since there are so many new people on council, plus it's a good reminder of how our department is different than the other departments in the city. And hopefully, Dylan, with your line of questioning, this will make it a little bit clearer what we try to do that is different. So it's kind of neat. Establishment of the Rock Island Public Library and Reading Room happened at the City Council meeting on August twelfth, eighteen seventy-two, with the library opening for business by November of that same year, making it, and it's an arguable point, the first public library to open its doors in the state of Illinois. So while public libraries are an integral part of communities today, that was not the case of the turn of the twentieth century. In fact, very few Illinois towns had free libraries in their community at all. It wasn't until March seventh, eighteen seventy-two, that Governor Palmer signed the Public Library Act authorizing cities, incorporated towns, and townships to establish and maintain free public libraries and reading rooms, quote, "for the use and benefit of the inhabitants of each city," end quote. The act passed the Illinois House by the vote of a hundred and twenty-four to four, and the Senate voted thirty-four to one in favor. And the intentions of this act were very clear. When a town made the decision to establish a library, a board of nine directors chosen from the citizens at large with reference to their fitness for such office, that was a quote, was to be selected with no more than one city council member on the library board at any time. The board was charged with creating rules and regulations for governing the library, as well as the expenditure of all proceeds garnered from the library fund collected from a specified tax levy. The library board had the power to construct a library building, appoint a suitable librarian and necessary assistants, and in general, carry out the spirit of the act. The act also declared that, quote, "Every library and reading room established under this act shall be forever free to the use of the inhabitants of the city." So hopefully, that kinda gives you some background, and I'm not great with numbers. Like Stephanie here, she had her tax bill up, I think it was sixty-seven dollars to the library on that tax bill. On average, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per household. But I like to do it as per person, just because everyone can use the library. And so I know that that's not how our tax is derived. It's per, you know, equalized assessed value. But if we did a dollar increase per resident per year, that equals our two percent increase that's proposed for this year's tax levy. And that's less than nine cents per month per person, and it garners us almost forty thousand dollars more in revenue. Two percent increase sounds high, I know that, but I don't like tax increases either. But if you look at all of the good that it's actually eight-point-three cents per month per person can do for our library, imagine what we could do if we just got a quarter extra per person per month, and that's about three dollars a year, and that represents the four-point-nine percent increase that the library board has been asking for over the past, each year, the past six years. And that's what Mylan Blackhawk Area has been levying an increase every year for the past six years. So this increase would help keep us going with the inflation costs, the high electronic materials costs that we incur and that our users demand, and more, and it would allow us to do smaller cosmetic projects at our downtown library to help us bring us up to date gradually, rather than a lump sum perpetually dependent on our CIP funds. So not to diminish the the thanks that I wanna give for our small increases that we have received over the past few years, because Stephanie's worked really hard on that, and the new council members, the mayor, thank you for that support. We, I know that our needs in the city are great across all of the departments, but I can only speak for the public library. And the institution in our city, it's open to everyone who chooses to use it. It's a life-changing institution that puts everyone on equal footing, encourages education and lifelong learning for all ages, and it's an organization that nationally, on average, has a return on investment between four and six dollars per dollar invested. So on behalf of my board and their finance committee, and Kevin, Kevin couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to really drive that point home that I asked that you please consider the four-point-nine percent tax levy increase for this year and for future years, because our citizens love our libraries. So that'll go on to my budget summary. We had a hard time putting the budget together this year because we're going through a lot of changes at the library, as you know. I've come and I spoke to council many times on the different things that are going on. So staffing, we were phasing out our library page position because they're our only minimum-wage position, and we know that minimum-wage law is going to affect this January. So as of today, we have four. We used to have six, and pretty soon we'll have two. We're promoting two internally to AIDS, library aides. And so due to the closing of thirty thirty-one, the addition of our mobile library, we're just kind of a moving target with staff right now. We're pretty level, if not down. I don't remember what our last number was in the book, but I think it's down from last year. Six years ago, we had forty-five staff. We're down, I think, thirty-five, thirty-six at this point. Full-time equivalents are down from about thirty-two to twenty-five. So we've taken a big hit over the last six years. But that's okay. I mean, we're being pretty creative. I don't think that we can realistically cut anymore and provide the same services that we've been able to provide. Service contracts, we have many. Kelly manages all of these ones, I believe, and does the RFPs for them. We're certain, we are doing a couple of new ones this year. We have the snow removals coming up, just rewarded the cleaning. We have, if you have any questions, I guess that's probably the best on any of these service contracts that we have. But we do have some major projects that we would like to do at our downtown library. We have, you know, you inherit what you inherit when you take over a job. Somebody a long time ago decided to plant trees in the concrete, and that's not very good for level concrete. So we're looking at a cooperative project with the city, is that Public Works?
Yes.
Public Works, to remove those trees that are causing tripping hazards for our patrons, and we'll replace it with something, you know, aesthetically pleasing, but not trees, and get that concrete taken care of. We are looking at doing AV upgrades in our community room downtown. We just received a grant from our foundation, about nine thousand dollars to help with that, but it'll be a pretty expensive project. We're gonna go through an RFP process for that. That'll help us with new speakers, video, audio, microphones. It's so outdated that some people It's it's so outdated that some people can't even use their computers in that room at this time. And then we have found some mold issues downtown. Our building is, you know, dry now with the tuck pointing and everything we've done over the past seven years. But we we have to abate that mold, particularly the stuff in the registers. I don't know, in the
In the air.
In the air handling units, thank you. And then if the fundraising study goes well, we may begin a capital campaign for a building project next year. So be announced, I guess, on that. Revenue changes, again, we submitted the four point nine percent increase. The budget that we have in here is for the two percent increase, which, again, thank you, that will still be very helpful. We try to anticipate levels of of changes in service to customers, operational changes. I think those kind of go together with us, but our HVAC's always been an issue. We're really hoping for a positive response from that engineering sustainability project that the city's going through that hopefully we can get, if not completely replaced, at least working a little bit better than what it has been. We've we've had some days where it's been over ninety degrees in the library. We've had some days where it's been, you know, fifty degrees in the library, and we've had to make service calls and we've had to get things fabricated. And so that's why our budget and and our public, our service contracts are, they're kind of hitting miss throughout the year. Like, we had an eight thousand dollar coil we had to have fabricated last year that we weren't planning on, so those kind of things do pop up. Operationally, going to be a big change for our staff and the public. We're closing that thirty thirty-one library December fourteenth is its last day. We've been working all year on that closure. Tomorrow at the board meeting, they'll be deciding whether or not to approve the 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 RFP for purchase of that building, which would be really helpful to us. And then we will be launching the mobile library by the end of the year, hopefully. And we have, we're, everyone is just ready for change, and we're going to have to be pretty flexible over the next few months, that's for sure. Grant-wise, we write grants to our, for our per capita aid money for our municipal library. I write it for our district library. And then our foundation contributes, they contribute up to four percent on their endowments, and that's a total return trust. So depending on the market, that could, it's usually averages, I would say, around seventy-five thousand dollars a year. This year, we got a lot more because we asked for support for the mobile library. And then they also have restricted funds that they have to give us. So we would never be who we are without the foundation. They're they're incredible, and I thank them very, very much. And then any other grants that we receive are usually done on our behalf by the foundation because they are the five oh one C three. I did get a Tyson's gift card grant, and then the Day Foundation gave us money this year for our Little Free Library Partnership Program with Rock Island Rotary. And I have a grant in right now for money for the census complete, complete count. That's through the American Library Association, so there are some some outstanding at this point. Professional development, the foundation is normally paid for that. This year, they're not going to be able to if we move forward with our capital campaign. So that's actually in our operation budget. And professional development is is hugely important to us. It's even in our strategic plan. Our staff puts a lot of time into that. Our our industry changes daily, especially with the technology. And CIP, we presented projects for the last few years of windows wiring in HVAC. HVAC might be taken care of if we move forward with that sustainability project. Windows and wiring still need help. Wiring, we've kind of chipped away at. Kelly's did a good job with that. And then, of course, we submitted for the full amount of our portion for the the central library, knowing that we need to fundraise for most of it. But I think it needs to be on everyone's radar, so. That's the library.
Catch your breath.
Yeah, I have a question, Angela. The Library Foundation is a huge part of your funding sources as well as other sources. But if a person wants to donate money for a particular project, I'll just use the audio/video upgrade as an example. How can they do that? Is is that done through the Library Foundation or can that be done through some other means?
It can be done either way. The foundation would gladly accept it and designate that money towards it if that was the stipulation. So if somebody wrote us a check and said it's for the AV project, they would be a pass-through, basically, and then write the check to us. Or it can be written directly to the library. We do have a small amount in our grants revenue that could definitely take that. And then this, just as long as we know what the intention is of the donor.
Thanks.
Have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
If I refer in our in our book that we have here to page one forty-two, as we're talking about total department expenditures as it relates to personnel, I see there's quite a significant increase in the proposed twenty twenty. What would account for that, that amount?
Um, I think I have it here. The personnel for the total expenditures?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Oh, that, I think our healthcare is in there as well as the negotiated raises for our union employees. I can't remember anything else that's in that one.
A couple of thoughts as I think about that one. One, you mentioned that professional development is in your budget. And so when the foundation funds professional development, there's a process where the library receives that donation and says, hey, we have revenue. Let's increase the professional development expense to offset that. So that, so that, so this year, the professional development is in there. We do conservatively budget when we have a contract open for negotiation. So what is in the budget is what UAW received last year.
They got three percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's a little higher there, and then we received updated health insurance rates from HR in recent weeks. And so we did go through and estimate the adjustment in the general fund in particular. We did not do that to other funds, so that might be a little bit of a theme as we go through the budgets tonight that some of the increase in funds other than general fund could be related to the health insurance. So we we initially put it in there for a ten percent increase. So the health, the personnel expenditures would only be spent, you know, based on costs incurred. So that's just a little something to keep in mind.
That reminds me, thank you. We have some open positions, and when we have them open, we expect they'll take the full family insurance, which they may have be replacing someone that didn't take insurance at all. So that would be a huge difference.
It's like twelve thousand.
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollar difference if someone has, takes the employee insurance.
Right, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, thank you.
You're on that page. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can you explain what the contingency proposed hundred fifty-one thousand dollars plus is about? This is on page one forty-two.
Those are our grants.
I'm sorry.
Our grant, our grants.
So that's grants that you're anticipating receiving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Not a question specific to their library, but as we're going through these and seeing all of the contracted services that each department has, are all of these listed on the city's website, Randy? Or how how do we inform potential vendors that they have an opportunity to bid?
Well, we put out a bid, like an RFP.
Well, I guess where's it published?
It'll be published. All RFPs are on the website.
Okay.
And additionally, if we have some people that we normally work with, we send it to them also.
Yeah, okay. So at some point, everything from recycling services to pest control for the library, that's all put on the website? Okay.
And those that are familiar, and if you know people, to have them sign up for those email notifications on that page, then they'll just get them automatically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Adele. Appreciate your service. Hey, we got Finance, HR, and General Administration all at one time here, huh?
All right, so we have a few departments to get through here, and we do have mentioned a break if anybody would want to take a break after after this next grouping. Now I gotta get organized. Okay, so the Finance Department, no staffing changes projected for twenty twenty. Just to kind of explain the makeup of the Finance Department, we do have eleven staff persons, all full-time personnel, one in administration, me. And then we have two divisions. So we have customer service and accounting, so roughly five people on each side of the department. One thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, always interesting taking a step back and, you know, looking at data from a higher level view. Looking back at two thousand fifteen actual personnel costs for the Finance Department, we are only four and a half percent higher five years later. Isn't that amazing? So that's a result of restructuring that's taken place in the department. So when I came in two thousand sixteen, I had a vacancy and just kind of wanted a different structure of the department. And so at that time, we had an auditor, a budget coordinator, which I do kind of miss that, by the way, but also a billing manager. And the auditor was was replaced with a accountant, and we had some internal control findings related to how the accounting division was set up. We had one person doing too many things. And, you know, you don't want someone balancing the books and recording the journal entries and all of that. So we added a second accountant in which also helps with coverage and backup. The budget coordinator was replaced with a junior accountant. So now we have some layers within accounting. So we have staff doing the basic work, then someone else reviewing, and it's someone overseeing all of that. So we have good internal controls there. And then the billing manager retired just this year, and we replaced that with a fiscal technician. So now we have layers within the department, again, establishing internal controls, going from the CSR to a fiscal tech, and then the manager over that department. So anyway, excited about that. It's, it also creates opportunities for advancement through the department, too, so. All right, budgeted projects, nothing major, nothing really exciting happens in in Finance. We're here to support everybody else's work in in the city, but, you know, our major product projects are the audit, the budget, which is a year-long process. Audit actually is a year-long process, it seems, too. Closing the books every month, doing budget analysis and other audits as they arise. We are constantly, you know, inquiries happen where other agencies that we work with audit our records, not anything unusual, but it's just kind of part of the, part of the process that takes a lot of work, staff time. For, in twenty twenty, you know, we'll be looking at finalizing the performance contracting implementation, so that'll be a big project. So my section for budgeted contracts for the city include the audits. So we are in year three of our five-year engagement with Lauterback and Eamon, and that's going well. We do have a banking relationship with the local bank in town, American Bank. And then through that contract, we we contract with JP Morgan Chase for two functions, our purchase cards, and then also our third-party administrator for collecting credit card payments at our major cashier locations. We do contract with an actuary for our pension liabilities, but also a different actuary for calculating our OPEB liabilities. The pension funds are are a big piece of my life, and so I serve on both the pension pension boards as treasurer. And those pension boards do have contracts with investment consultants. And it will be interesting as we move forward, twenty twenty and beyond, how pension consolidation works and how we make that happen. So that'll be, I should put that on my big project. That wasn't on there when I, when I created this document. We do have collection contracts with Quadcore. And then the other big piece that Finance works with is parking enforcement. It's a very fun part of our life. But we do have a contract with Permar who assigns us a staff person that that monitors during the weekday time parking enforcement issues, tickets, and then the software that we use to manage those tickets is called Duncan Solutions. So I do provide the amount that we have budgeted or what is in our contract for each of those contracts that I mentioned. We don't have any revenues in the Finance Department. We just manage everybody else's. No planned changes for level of services right now or any major operational changes. Just keep trying to do better and become more efficient every, every year that goes by. So with that.
Couple of questions. At our unplugged three event that we went to, somebody asked about the cards for cash back benefits or whatever. Are those options available for large enterprises like a city where you can get cash back from all using a certain company's credit card or purchase card or whatever?
So what comes to mind is with our purchase cards program, which is a, you know, pretty efficient way to pay small bills. So it runs, you know, we have anywhere from fifty to seventy thousand dollars per month in purchase card transactions, which is so helpful. Think of all of the little invoices that would be flying around and reimbursements to employees and things if we didn't have that program. But at any rate, we do have a rebate from those expenditures. And so it's one percent of the total, of total purchases. And I want to say we just got our check in the last month, and it was a little over eight thousand, eight thousand dollars, and that has deposited deposited the miscellaneous revenue in the general fund. Don't tell any of the enterprise funds, but we don't split it up.
And then I imagine reviewing those types of benefits is part of a bidding process if when you go out to renew the vendor for those cards. If somebody's offering three percent or something, then we might consider going with them.
Definitely.
Okay. Just curious, so not this proposed budget, but years past, Finance has been funded by Riverboat Gaming and Adopt a School. I don't even know what Adopt a School is, but why, I guess? Oh, sorry, yeah, ninety-two is what's on my book.
You know, that reminds me, there are some other points I should mention when it comes to the Finance Department. So the Finance Department, and I am turning, you're on page ninety-two. The Finance Department also is kind of houses some of the citywide expenditures just by nature of being the Finance Department. So those costs are in the Finance Department budget. And so with the Riverboat Gaming, those two lines and and that particular one is actually, we do use gaming funds for contracts as well. So you will see some of that when you look in the CIP plan, gaming-funded expenditures, and that's allowed by our financial policy. So that's what those smaller, smaller amounts are. When you look at page ninety-two, you see a market increase in programs and transfers out. And so with that, with the programs, it increased from six thousand to ninety-two thousand. That is where the line item that we will make tax rebates out of. So GTI, Aggris Solutions, Dunkin' Donuts has a sales tax rebate. The Save More Grocery Store on Seventh has a tax rebate. And so we budget for those in there, and we'll code that payment. And so we budget for those in there and we'll code that payment to that. So it's being directly funded out of the general fund, which makes sense because that's where the revenues are coming into.
Makes, it makes sense to have that in finance and not in CED?
Well, it is a joint effort to pay those. So it's a good point that CED often is the one that, that does pay out on redevelopment agreements. Most of our redevelopment agreements up to this point have been out of TIFs. And so they generate those check requests, the director reviews, and that payment is made because they manage the TIFs. So in this case, these aren't coming out of the, out of the TIFs. But the process will be that, you know, per the redevelopment agreement, the request for, for payment, you know, goes through either the city manager's office or the CED department. And then since it will be coming out of the finance department, that request would come to me to review and then we would pay it out.
What kind of, sorry, I don't remember from the meeting last week, but what type of CIP projects does finance have?
So with no CIP projects really, I would like one, and that would be software replacement. But we aren't here to talk about that tonight, Randy's laughing, but, so, so contracts funded by gaming, you know, on the gaming side. But as far as CIP projects, no. We haven't had any that rise to that level. Although in 18, part of that 161,000 was $75,000 for a utility billing upgrade. That was required, our North Star Software had an upgrade that had a pretty hefty price tag. So that was funded with gaming, gaming dollars. I mentioned there's also a large increase in the transfers line item there on page 92. And those transfers are made into the, through the finance department's GL line item. And there's now three transfers out. The first one being the transfer we talked about earlier with MLK, so we do pay that there. Second would be a transfer to the Parks Department. And that is actually paying them back or reimbursing them for certain work that they do in the entryways, beautifying the entryways to the city. And then the third one is new this year, and that is the transfer of the locally collected gas tax, the five cents per gallon, to the capital projects street fund. So that will be paid out of, out of the finance department.
Stephanie, under the programs, under expenditures, rather large increase there, 1433%. Can you clarify that just a little bit?
So that is the line item where we're making those property tax and sales tax rebates out of. That's the increase there. We have some new, new agreements that are new in 2020.
Thank, that's good, thank you.
Good, no problem.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just curious, again. So for the budgeted contracts, like the pension consulting, things like that. So some of these are funded by gaming money, is that correct?
In the budget for next year, none of them are.
None of them are? Oh, yeah, okay, I guess so, past years, that was the case. And I know that we are trying to kind of slowly go to not having things that are sort of going to be bills that the city has every year being funded by gaming.
Correct, that's my goal.
Right, and so is this part of that? Are we, I mean, or is it just the fact that we don't have that type of contract this year that, that is typically funded by gaming?
So what kind of happens with balancing the general fund and the CIP in general? So we have a certain amount of gaming available, gaming funds available to cover the requests of the city. Although we start with covering the principal and interest payments that are due on the, on the governmental debt, any, any of the debt outside of the enterprise funds and TIF districts. In helping to balance the general fund and utilize gaming, we have used gaming funds to pay for general fund contracts. And it's not just in one department, it's been public works, police and finance. And so what happens as part of that process is, and it's not to say that it won't happen this year. The, like I list the GL accounts here on my, on my schedule. The last three digits are the funding source. And so for instance, you know, if we were to use gaming to fund a general fund contract, we would change this line to a 223 ending. 223 is the, is the gaming funds fund number. And then part of that process is a transfer out of 223 to general fund. And then a revenue source in the general fund saying hello, we're going to get money from the gaming fund. So it's kind of a three-part entry. So it is, as we talked about last week, the concept of balance, closing that gap in the general fund. So we were at 1.1 million last week. And two, two possible sources of funding that gap. One is to utilize some of our general fund reserves. And so, you know, looking at where we're at for the general fund budget, one day of reserves is equal to $105,000. You know, so on my notes for balancing the general fund, we may use four or five days of general fund reserves. And I say that because 2019, while the budget was a deficit budget utilizing seven days of reserves, actually. This year, we've had some good things happen. We've had a mix of good and bad, but it's looking like the good is outweighing the bad. And going into next year, we should be back to zero 90 days. So would feel fairly comfortable, you know, using four or five days of reserves. The other piece of balancing the budget is the possibility of utilizing some of our gaming fund reserves. And so last year, we did utilize two months of the current year's gaming's contributions. And when we, when we did that, then we go through the general fund, identify contracts. And it's usually like contracts, you know, like, like a good example is body cameras, you know, $96,000. We're going to fund this with gaming. And so that body cameras line item in the police department gets a 223 ending on the end. We have an expense in the gaming fund transferring $96,000 to the general fund. And then we have a revenue in the general fund saying hello, we're going to get money from the gaming. So it is kind of part of the process.
Stephanie, can I ask you to repeat the, the one-day reserves figure that you gave?
Sure, $105,000.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I have a question about your contracts for parking enforcement and parking software. And it's a two-part question, basically. What do those contracts cost us if you have the figure, but if you don't, you can email it to us or something on that order? And do the parking tickets that are issued and the payments received cover the cost of both of those contracts?
Okay, so I did list the amount on mine, so at least I thought I did, it's kind of hard to read. So it's kind of halfway through the second page, it says parking. But budgeting $18,000 for the software piece, and with the software piece, they do charge us for each ticket that's issued. And then for each ticket that's paid, there's a little payment fee on it. And then Permar is by hour of the staff person that's assigned to us, so 18,000 and 34,000. The final part of your question is, does the parking ticket revenue cover those contracts? And it does.
It does.
We're not getting rich off of it though, but it does cover it, but not by a lot.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Another question?
Not a question, but a comment. Stephanie, I can probably speak on behalf of several of us up here. We do appreciate the continued excellence in the job that you do, so thank you very much.
Absolutely echo that, a lot of long hours. All right. Get to move to HR. John.
Welcome to the box.
It's nice looking.
It's a nice box, isn't it?
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess the HR budget starts on page 85, if you want to start there with the document here. But looking at the overview here, earlier this year, the department did a minor reorganization with retirement of Patrick Doherty. And basically, Sharice Law was reclassified as the benefits program manager. Chris Castleine, who's with me tonight, is our new risk manager, he replaced Patrick here. And this is kind of his first year through the budget here. And we also hired a HR assistant in October here. So one of the things that we're kind of seeing, I guess that impacts the general fund and maybe some of the other funds is that we have newer employees and they're not as paid as much as the incumbents. And so we're seeing some savings from those changes. We're also not funding an intern position for 2020, which, which is basically a .08 full-time equivalent here. For budgeted capital projects here, I mean, we really don't have any of them here. One of the things we would like to get eventually here would be benefits program software. We're kind of in a software mode like, like finances too, but we don't have anything currently here. We do oversee a wide variety of contracts here, I mean, with legal services here. We also oversee the temporary service employee contract here, EAP. And one of the things I didn't have listed here is basically the business training library. That's kind of citywide training program that people can use throughout the city here. They just have to have really an internet connection here. Medical services here, we use Genesis for workers' compensation and health. Genesis is basically the provider that provides staffing for the wellness center downstairs in the basement of City Hall here. And I guess other thing is Blue Cross Blue Shield. They oversee our medical, third-party and Cobra administration. SA benefits is reinsurance, CS is pharmacy, Delta Dental, VISA's. And VIA benefits, we use the VIA benefits for our Medicare retirees. As part of our joint administration agreement here, retirees get $1,600 per year that they can use towards either the Medicare supplement or the party drug subsidy. Or they could take advantage of an advantage program also here. For, for self-insurance, we use Crawford and Company and Broadspire for workers' compensation, third-party administration. And we also use TriStar for our flexible spending account. Some of the consulting that we have, we use Hall Murphy for health consulting and actuarial services here. And Arthur Gallagher for risk management here. And we also have some just general agreements here with Augustana College for use of the Wellness Center, as well as South Rock Island Township. And we oversee the citywide vending with Vander Vending and also the cable franchise agreement with MediaCom here. So we, we have our fingers in a lot of contracts. Looking at revenues for 2020 here, I mean, overall, we're budgeted about 7.955 million. So this is going to be a slight decrease of about 64%, or 64,000, about 1% compared to the current budget year. Self-insurance revenues are going to decrease about 10.9%, about, almost about $199,000. And I guess one of the things I should kind of make mention here of, is during the last audit here, basically the fund is running a bit of a deficit here, but I think that can be explained a little bit. I think some of the costs are a little bit overrepresented here in terms of what, what is considered to be the deficit here. We have a million dollars for, for a lawsuit and 250 for another lawsuit. Our base, our maximum payouts are going to be $100,000 under, under that. So I think these are a little bit inflated, so I think that number's a little bit, little bit high. I think we can bring that down here too. And we're also trying to build up some fund surplus. I mean, we're estimated to collect about 157,000 additional revenue for the upcoming year. So we're trying to get the fund tilted in the right direction here. But another aspect of it is that we have not had the experience that we've had in previous years. So that's part of the reason why we've been able to reduce this, because we kind of take a look at a five-year rolling average here. That's how we do our charges back to the department based on our actual experience. And also what the insurance premiums are that we pay out every, every May here with, with Arthur J. Gallagher or the old Cleveland agency here. Okay, moving on to health insurance here, revenues are projected to increase 1.7% or roughly $105,000 from last year. And one of the things that's nice here is that we have a fund surplus of about 2.104 million. So we are able to apply about 92,000, 93,000 of that towards premiums for 2020. So that's going to help kind of slow some of our health fund expenses. Overall, what we're looking at for premium expenses is about 4.3% in 2020. And that's with, you know, medical inflation at 7.1% for medical, 7.5% for, for pharmacy here. So we're a little bit below that average here, which is, I think, positive here. The cafeteria plan, for those of you that aren't familiar with that, people can take money out on a pre-tax basis to pay for out-of-pocket medical expenses as well as dependent care expenses. This is wholly funded by the employees, has no city funds to it here. But we are seeing a rise in the use of the cafeteria plan. So we're looking at revenues to increase about 36%, or 29,342 next year. And one of the things that's not listed on here, but it's kind of listed in the pages of the, the budget document here, is the general fund, I mean, for the department. Basically, we budgeted $633,085. So we're looking at a decrease of, of about 1.9% or $12,003 from last year here. So we're, we're trying to keep that cost in control the best we can here. So changes in levels of service, we're not looking at no service changes. But one of the, moving down to operational changes here, one of the issues we've had in the last six months here is that we've had a, you know, the nurse practitioner left in about June, so we're just bringing a new one on. It'll be sometime in early December here, so it was Joe Cusats. And then the new nurse practitioner is going to be Tammy Torch. So she's in the process of getting, getting here to the wellness center here too. So still the medical assistant and a nurse practitioner both could be working 40 hours a week here. So that service is unchanged. And Genesis has been backfilling most of the days for the clinic here. So not all the days are staff, but the majority of them are here. And I guess as part of our agreement with Augustana and South Rock Island Township, I mean, they're still, they're still able to come to the Wellness Center here. And for both of them, it's really anyone on their healthcare plan. So if they're on the healthcare plan, we have a list of that and they can use it. For Augustana, we get $50 a head for every visit they have here. And South Rock Island Township agrees to pay one and a half percent of our overall monthly here.
Does that, if I may, does that, the Wellness Center, I mean, it's phenomenal benefit for the employees and, and the schools. What would you, would you say that that reduces our exposure for, for the insurance? In other words, a person going to our, to the wellness center as opposed to going to their, their local doctor? I mean, they're going to turn in that, they're going to, they can come here for, for free. And that, or they would go to their doctor and they would have, and then we would pay out the insurance claim minus the, the deductible. Is there significant savings for the city for something like that?
Well, that's, that's, that's a good question, but it's kind of hard to measure. I mean, we look at a lot of the soft cost numbers, we look at the time it's spent away from the office to go to the doctor's visits here. And really, it depends a lot on the interaction that you have with the nurse practitioner. It's important that we have someone that has really good people skills.
Right.
And makes that connection, so people want to use the clinic. Because if they're not using the Wellness Center, then they are going into the actual market here to get their services here. And that does drive our costs up. But we're, we're hopeful too that it heads off any like long disease issues that maybe they're recognized early. So people aren't having heart attacks, I mean, they're maybe getting medications. So don't have any studies done or hard figures, I mean, of what we're saving. But, you know, I'm hopeful, hopefully optimistic that yes, we are saving money from people using the Wellness Center here. Really for their long-term health.
Thank you.
And I guess the last thing I have is the capital improvement plan here. I mean, we don't have any CIP fundings for any things in, in 2020 here, so. That's really the short and dirty of HR here, so. Not sure if there's any questions. Chris and I will be glad to entertain them.
Two questions. One, for the cafeteria plan, do we get the benefit of making interest on the employees' savings?
So, we do have pooled cash, so we do earn interest on any cash balances that we have. So there probably is a little bit of interest income in that fund. Um, but really, a big impact for an employer of having your employees participate in a flexible savings account is the fact that it's pre-tax. And so then, the employer is not paying the employer taxes on that. I mean, it's not a big, big change, but, you know, it is a little bit.
Sure.
So my understanding, I'm sorry, I was just running you on that one topic.
Yep.
And that if an employee leaves, it's in this plan that leaves, the money stays with the city?
Yeah, it would move to the health fund here.
Okay.
If they leave anything over, don't expend it during the current calendar year, then, then it would go to the health fund.
Good.
And that's part of the use it or lose it IRS rules, and so it can go either way. So, you know, an employee could use all of their funds that they've elected for twenty-twenty, you know, dentures or, you know, whatever, and use it all at once and leave in February.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. The health fund picks up that part, 'cause Stephanie's right, I mean, if they agree to put, you know, fifty dollars a pay period aside and they're, it's gonna add up to five thousand a, a year, and then they use it all on January third, we're out that money. And they leave in, in March, we're out that money, so it kinda cuts both ways.
Oh, okay, that's cool, but I've seen it where that, it could, they can only spend what they have in there, they can't spend ahead.
No, you can spend ahead.
You can spend ahead? Okay, I've seen it where you cannot, but, okay. Go ahead.
Last question, I'd asked a number of months ago about the IML RMA. That would be a significant change to our budget, I would guess, maybe not significant, but we would be changing what we pay, I guess. Uh, are you still looking into the IML risk management?
We're gonna conduct an RFP this, probably late this winter, probably, you know, after January here, so, I mean, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Uh, the nice thing with IML, you know, is that you pay a set fee, and then that's it. They take over all the claims and, uh, uh, and head that off. And if they make any profit, then that kinda stays with.
Yeah.
IML. You know, conversely, we're self-insured right now, so if there's any profit, it stays with the fund here. And we lose a little bit of our, I guess, autonomy over what happens with claims. I mean, it's gonna be wholly dictated by IML. I mean, uh, right now, we do have, uh, a general liability committee that meets once a month and determines whether we're gonna pay or not pay claims here. But it's gonna be strict adherence here to, uh, toward immunity protections that the city enjoys. And they're gonna say no to a lot of claims, and I suspect a number of you around the table will hear about those. So there's gonna be some, some advantages and disadvantages to this, but we'll, we'll take a look at it. And, uh, I'll probably have someone from finance sit in and get their perspective here, too. Just, this is gonna save us money here.
Yeah, I know. The number of executive sessions that we have about voting on, um, disability insurance payouts or something like that, we wouldn't, if I understand it correctly, we wouldn't have any, that wouldn't be our problem. We would pay IML, RMA, and our, you know, just like a normal health insurance program.
And then our premiums would be adjusted accordingly.
Exactly.
Yep, okay. So that's, that RFP, RFQ process is this spring, this year?
Yeah, it'll be out in early winter. We're working on it right now.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for following up, too. I've been asking about that for a while.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
What there?
Hi, what there?
Oh, gee.
Coming over here? Gosh, those mouths.
All right, so, the budget review. Uh, staffing remains the same with the exception of the deputy clerk that you see on there. So that's a part-time position, point six-five of a person. And Judith, he starts tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
All right, so, great news there. We used to do strategic planning with Lyle, if you remember. Those of you that have been here long enough remember Lyle.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The last visit cost us quite a fortune, uh, the number of visits he made here. It was well over thirty thousand dollars, I think, the, the final bill on that. So last year, we reduced that quite a bit, and we decided to try to, I guess, two years ago, we did something in-house, uh, which was just with, uh, staff. And this last year, we actually used ByState, and they came in, and that seemed to work out well, so we're gonna do that again. So we really don't have anything budgeted for that, because they do it at no cost, so, uh, that's saved us over the years. And I think we used to budget about seventeen or eighteen thousand for that, so that was a nice savings. Our Labor Day Parade is still coordinated through our office, and it's got a seventeen thousand five hundred dollar budget. Jay Wild is our marketing, it's gonna continue for twenty-twenty. We have to bring the contract to council, but we anticipate council would approve that. And I think the actual budget for that now is thirty-five thousand that we, we finally came up with. Revenue, you see a number of different revenue items on there. Most of that is pretty standard. One, uh, thing that you will see change, and that's if you approve here in the coming weeks, the change to our video gaming, uh, we're gonna go up, and it's not reflected here, but we're gonna go up right now. It's two-hundred-and-fifty-two, the bar owner, bar or restaurant owner for each machine. Uh, we're gonna change that to fifty dollars, and then to the actual operator of the machine. The owner of the machine will be a twelve-hundred-dollar fee per machine. So that amounts to ninety-three thousand dollars, I think, in additional revenue, which we have factored into the budget. So we, we hope you would approve that. No change to service levels, uh, marketing is gonna be the same, we don't have any grants. Our projects are just basically stuff we do in-house, so the budget development that we work with Stephanie and her team on and all the directors. Strategic planning, um, I just spoke about, we do quite a bit of economic development, uh, with the mayor and myself and CED, so we kinda work hand-in-hand on that. Mayor's got a lot of connections that we don't have, and he's able to introduce us to some people. So, uh, we hope that's gonna play out at some point to our advantage, but certainly has fostered a lot of discussion. Uh, and then there's the marketing, and so licensing, uh, out of the specific department, um, my office there, they do the liquor licenses, uh, that includes all temporary and annual liquor licenses. And Judith can expand on what she does if she wants to come in, I know she's up next, but she handles the other licenses. Professional development, uh, I know it was a little confusing this year, because you made some changes mid-year on to what council was gonna get for representation in professional development. And some previous councilmen may have spent more than their share, so it was a little confusing. I hope that worked out, but we'll start the year off right with, uh, twenty thousand dollars, or two thousand dollars in professional development and a thousand for representation funds for each alderman. Any questions about that in particular?
About the funding for the alderman?
Hmm, yeah. Okay. Now, it was a little confusing this year, because we had to kinda switch money around. There really wasn't enough money to cover everything, so we had to do a bunch of transfers, but, uh, I think it worked out okay. Uh, the next one really is, uh, Judith, we did appoint her as the OMA compliance officer in twenty-eighteen. Well, I guess the council did. So she monitors all those policies and keeps us on our toes and makes sure we follow everything, so... And she can elaborate on the deputy clerk, and it's starting tomorrow.
And anything else that you wanna add, Judith? 'Cause I know your information is contained within the document.
Yes, my information, I added into this document. Um, the deputy clerk will be trained to eventually fill in for the city clerk. But their primary, um, task will be tackling the records management elephant in the room that we have. Um, the city clerk is technically the keeper of all city records. And right now, aside from what's on my computer, my records are in six different locations within the city. So the deputy clerk will have to do a detailed inventory of all the records that we have, determine which ones can be disposed of according to the state archivist's schedule, and then arrange for, there's a whole process that you have to go through for that. Um, and then figure out where we're going to keep all the permanent records that we have to keep and eventually, hopefully, start digitizing some of those. And I think we're going to work on updating our records management policy for the city, 'cause we've had a lot of confusion lately, especially over email records when people leave. Um, so we'll be working on that, too. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Am I got any questions?
Uh, I don't have a question for Judith, I have a question going back to budgeted projects.
Yes.
The Labor Day Parade, uh, how is that funded? From what source is that funded?
Uh, that's gaming.
Gaming. And what about the Fourth of July fireworks display?
That's gaming also, red, white, and boom, I believe, off the top of my head, is ten thousand. You'll see that in the CIP next week.
Thank you.
So those are both funded with gaming.
And I would add on the parade, they actually do get some donations, too.
They do.
So I wanna say, is it, maybe like fourteen thousand five hundred of gaming, and then the other three thousand?
I think that's right.
Is, uh, donations that are received that help support that event.
Thanks. Great events they are.
And that's run by an independent committee, so, we fund them, but they, they do great work.
Um, I have a question, trying to figure out, so, in our binder here, we have page eighty-three, the personnel expenditures, but that's only the city manager, the assistant to the city manager, which no longer exists, and the executive secretary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then on page eight, we have the city clerk's expenditures, which the personnel, that is going to be both the city clerk and the deputy city clerk now?
That's correct.
And then, the next page, one forty-nine, personnel, is that the mayor and us?
You are back on the previous page, one forty-seven.
Oh.
Numbers are just listed in different sections of the budget, and that's for.
Okay.
Audit reasons, Stephanie can elaborate on, and how it's kinda laid out.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure I got the right number here. So, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for the eight of us personnel expenses sitting up here. And that's our salary, whatever the term is, I don't know, salary's the right word?
It is.
Salary, the healthcare benefits, and, and is that IMRF as well?
Yes, and all of your, yes, everything in there.
Okay. And what is, what do we get paid, seven thousand dollars?
Six thousand.
Thousand?
And the mayor gets twelve.
Okay, so six times seven, I'm trying to subtract out the pay to figure out what the expenditure is for the city councils.
I can send you a breakdown of that, would that be easier if I just sent you the sheet?
Sure.
Okay, why don't I do that?
Thank you.
It'll be a lot easier than trying to do the math. It, it is up because, uh, there are more elected officials on healthcare now?
Yeah. I mean, even just...
And, um, one thing to point out, too, is on page, I don't think, need new glasses or what? But I can't see out of the right side of my eyes. Um, so on page one forty-seven, look at, um, the actual two thousand eighteen column, see how it says thirty-one thousand? And then proposed twenty-twenty is...
Thirty-one thousand where?
Uh, so, actual two thousand eighteen, on page one forty-seven.
Which row?
In the other row, sorry. Thirty-one thousand nine forty-nine, and then proposed is twenty thousand eight fifty. So there is a reduction from eighteen to twenty. And I point out the reduction from eighteen to twenty, um, kind of skipping over nineteen. So we did make a change this year, where, um, in the past, the discretionary funds were paid from a, uh, an account called Representation, which is in that other category. So now, we, um, now there's professional development and less in that other category, in the Representation line. So professional development, by nature of its account classification, falls in that personnel. So that's part of the increase in the personnel, and then the decrease in other. And so why does it skip from eighteen to twenty? Because in nineteen, we did do budget transfers to kind of move that, that money back and forth. And so that's part of our budget ordinance, is that we're allowed to make transfers within a department, within a fund, um, as just kinda part of ordinary business. So that's, that's that. So that's part of the increase, as you're backing into that. It's just a change in the way the accounting is working.
Yeah. So pretty much other is exclusively our Representation Fund.
Yes.
How's it go, I mean, it's a thousand, we just had a thousand dollars in each city council member's Representation Fund, yet we have twenty thousand in there, budgeted, and there's only eight of us.
But there would be some other, um, lines in that, in that account, um, other things that fall in. Other are supplies, so, um, uh, forms, business cards, that kind of, kind of thing. So there is more than Representation in that line.
Okay. Thanks.
We can just send that out, I mean, it's a fairly small, um, Excel spreadsheet to look at. Why don't I just send that out to all of you, and you can see those particular line items?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Much?
So, I propose we take a break, it is six forty-seven. Could we meet back up at seven? Is that too long? Thirteen minutes?
That's fine, that, that works. Make it seven-thirty. Give me time to run the Theos.
Someone's gotta give you a hard time, I don't know.
To leave the building.
Uh, staff members are, the staff was, there's food back there for you guys, too. It's good, by the way. Keep the bakava away from me, as ever, I just finished my second piece.